All right, good evening. Welcome to Board of Trustees meeting for Grand Blank Township for Tuesday, March 8th. If we could all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Robertson, would you care to call the roll?
I'd be happy to, Mr. Supervisor. Trustee Hugo.
Here.
Trustee Fike.
Here.
Trustee Raridan.
Here.
Trustee White.
Here.
Treasurer Kilmer.
Here.
And myself, here. Supervisor Bennett.
Yes.
Seven members present, a quorum.
Okay, thank you. And now for the approval of the agenda. Are there any amendments or discussion? Otherwise, they'll entertain a motion for approval. Okay, Ms. Hugo makes that motion.
Hugo makes the motion and seconded by Fike.
Yes.
Okay. Trustee Raridan.
Yes.
Trustee Hugo.
Yes.
Trustee White.
Yes.
Trustee Fike.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Treasurer Kilmer.
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett.
Yes.
Seven, seven nothing, motion passes.
Thank you. Now, we will go to public comment. And would anybody like to make public comment? We'll start over here on the left side of the room, if anybody would like to make public comment. Okay. How about on the right side of the room? You could give us your name and address and welcome.
Well, thank you. Good evening. My name is Paul Young. I live here in Grand Blank Township, 16104 Town Bridge. And I just wanted to let you all know that I am running for Congress here in what is the 8th district in Michigan. This district includes Genesee County, Saginaw County, Bay County, and Midland County. After redistricting, we now live in a district that is, from a political point of view, more competitive than it typically has been. Many of you in this room know that here in Genesee County, Dan Kildee has been our congressman for, this is his fifth term, and before him, his uncle was there for 38 years. So, we've had a half-century of Kildee representation. But as I say, my name is Paul Young. I'm a Republican, and I think a half-century has been enough. So, if you're looking for change, I'll be asking for your support. I'm a native of Michigan. My parents were raised in Jackson. My brothers and I were born in Ann Arbor. I have family that went to the University of Michigan, Michigan State University. I have an uncle who was president of, worked in a state prison, was president of the union there. I've had educators as my grandparents, parents, aunts, and uncles. I've worked in my family business. My dad had a business maintaining military family housing. And so, while I was born and lived a good part of my childhood here, we did move as I followed my family, and then eventually did work in that family business as well. I'm an attorney. I was a criminal prosecutor. I served as an investigative counsel for the Senate Judiciary Committee in Washington for Chuck Grassley of Iowa was my boss. And then, I did serve in the Department of Homeland Security, working on border and immigration issues. I expect a vigorous campaign. I look forward to getting to know all of you. And should I be successful, I'll be working hard to represent your interests in Washington, DC. Thank you.
Anybody else care to make public comment? Okay, see, no further public comment. We will bring it back to the board. And at this time, we have a privileged presentation, and I'd ask Chief Burdette to come forward. And Deputy Chief.
I brought him along.
Absolutely.
Good evening.
I'm sorry.
This evening, it's the honor of the Fire Department to present to the board three individuals who took part in a rescue effort on February 19th. It was a phenomenal situation. It's not often that people come across and have to do CPR, but this morning, three individuals succumbed to needing CPR because of life emergency. So, if it endows me for a moment, I'll just read through the letter that I received from one of our firefighters. On Saturday, February 19th, 2022, Lyle Knopf, Adam Frank, David Bechtel, members of the Grand Blank Township Fire Department were involved in a lifesaving operation while off-duty. The three firefighters were on a weekend snowmobiling trip with friends near the village of Curtis located in the Upper Peninsula of Michigan, when they were alerted to an individual's needing medical attention in a nearby cabin. Without hesitation, firefighter Knopf ran to the cabin and found three male individuals unresponsive and not breathing. Firefighter Knopf immediately began CPR on one of the individuals while calling for firefighters Frank and Bechtel for additional help. Together, the firefighters provided CPR to the three subjects, which until the officers from the Michigan State Police and other local first responders arrived to administer Narcan and provide additional medical assistance. The three firefighters continued CPR until EMS arrived and was unable to, and were able to transport the individuals to a local hospital, where they were listed in stable condition at the time of Sunday morning. As of right now, I understand from the state trooper who responded, that all individuals were released from the hospital. The quick decisive action of Lyle Knopf, Adam Frank, and Dave Bechtel not only saved the three men's lives, but also saved the individual's children's from an insufferable loss. The actions reflect highly upon not only themselves, their profession, and the Fire Department of Grand Blank Township, but also the community of Grand Blank. So, it's my honor to have Adam Frank, Lyle Knopf, and Dave Bechtel come up and receive awards. Also, an assistance came from Larry Warburton, who was there assisting them. Larry was the one who went and got Adam and David to help with the CPR. So. They'll also receive a, the firefighters will receive ribbons that would be worn with their uniforms for CPR. Okay.
Well, the board would like to express our congratulations. And Chief Burdette is spot-on when he says that, you know, what this says is more than just about these individuals. It's about our firefighting team that we have here and our township. And just when I, when I heard this story for the first time, I just couldn't believe it. And just phenomenal that all you gentlemen were at the right place at the right time to save these people's lives. And I know our board feels similarly, that we are just so proud of what you guys did in your off-duty time. It's just phenomenal. So, thank you, and thanks to all our firefighters and all of our first responders. We've got police here as well. But thank you for what you do. And it just shows, doing the stuff while you're on vacation somewhere in the middle of nowhere, that you take what you do seriously. It's beyond just a job. It's, it's your vocation and your passion. So, and we'd also like to thank, you know, Mr. Warburton too, for his quick response. And not everybody we know, you know, responds to those things appropriately. And we're just very grateful that you were there as well, and very pleased to have you as a resident, and my neighbor too. So, thank you, gentlemen, very much. We appreciate it. Well, all of you are welcome to stick around for the rest of our meeting if you choose to. But if you don't choose to, feel free to leave if you want right now. Thanks.
Standing at ease?
We'll stand at ease for about three or four minutes, and then we'll get started again. Okay, we're going to go back into session here, and we will continue with the approval of the consent agenda at this time. Yes.
I'd like to make a motion, but after I have one quick comment.
Sure.
But I'll make the motion.
Okay, you make the motion.
Motion for the consent agenda.
Okay. Is there support for the, okay, support by Mr. Fike? Go ahead.
I'll just wait to vote, and then.
Okay. All right.
Trustee Fike.
Yes.
Trustee White.
Yes.
Trustee Hugo.
Yes.
Trustee Raridan.
Yes.
Treasurer Kilmer.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett.
Yes.
Seven, nothing, motion passes.
Okay, thank you.
If you don't mind, I do have a question. I think it's primarily for Mr. Limata.
Okay.
And what I was wondering, and we haven't talked about it in a while, and at first, you know, I was opposed to this, but the project. But where are we on the Monday Township, Fenton Township, that little 600-yard line?
The water project. We have a proposed contract sitting on my desk right now from the Genesee County Drain Commissioner's Office with proposed breakdown on there. I don't have it with me. Our costs are coming in at like $300 and some thousand dollars. I haven't, I just haven't put it on an agenda yet to bring it forward. I got it last week, and we'd have put it on this one, it would go on the next one for your consideration.
Okay.
Okay. Just curious, like I said, I was opposed because that wasn't going to help us, but I knew you said something was going to happen.
Yeah, I'm not 100% supportive of it either, quite frankly. I, you know, and it either is DPW Director Sears. We did the engineering to look at it. I mean, it would provide us with some system redundancy, but I can have it on the next agenda, and we can have a discussion about it then. You guys can look at the agreement that was proposed by the Drain Commissioner's Office.
Or you could even put it on the second, the next one beyond that.
Okay. All right, thank you. So, with regard to old business, our strategic plan, Mr. Limata.
We just talked about this two weeks ago, is that one of the items that we, when we put this together and adopted it back in mid-2021, was to take a look at improving enforced rental housing standards and ordinances. And we had planned it for the first quarter of 2022, because we had a lot of other projects we were working on. We've done some background work, and I included those into the packet, so that you can see some of the information that helps you kind of understand the notices that are resolved around there. It's required, the housing law of Michigan Act 167 of 1917 really regulates this. I did ask Attorney Laddie to put some information together on the legalities as a township, our ability to enact this type of ordinance and enforce it. I did also include with you guys just a quick screen grab of Pittsfield Township. They did do, they do have a program in place. And I haven't reached out to talk to them yet about the success or how they feel that that program has gone for them. I can tell you that in the Michigan Municipal Executives listserv, this came with topic of conversation in 2021. There was a lot of negative comments on it about the cost to run it, how hard it is to run. You have to understand that there's tenants' rights. If the tenants don't want you to acquiesce to an inspection to come in, they have certain rights about when those inspections can take place. It's about having landlords registered. So, there's a lot of moving parts. Again, not something that we can't accomplish. I assure you that we can accomplish it. But I also think it's, you know, it's important that we make that decision based upon what makes the most sense for Grand Blank Township, based upon where you guys wanted to go from a strategic planning initiative. And the information that I captured from the strategic plan, you know, was more about defining standards for Grand Blank Township rental programs, researching the other municipalities, so we can look at those laws. That's kind of where we're at now. And then, we have to create a basic framework for enforcement, registration, that kind of thing. I hope that our conversation today, we leave here with a better understanding from a staff perspective on what you guys, like how far we want to go into this thing. Again, it probably requires us to go one of two ways. We hire additional inspector who works on rental programs. Maybe the cost approximated at around $100,000 annually. We buy software and tracking software for that, train the employees, establish reporting requirements, identify the rental homes. We have to, I mean, we can, there's a couple ways we can do that through our assessing office by looking for people who don't have a PRE filed. So, we assume that it's a rental. Then, we make the requirement that all rental programs, that landlords have to file and turn in and submit to be certified as a rental program. Usually, those would come with some type of an inspection tied to that. So, they pay $100, for example, to register. Now, we know where they are. Then, we set up inspections. Then, we start to determine how often you guys would want to have them inspected. Is it when tenants change out? Is it every year? Is it once every three years? So, we start to develop those parameters around it. I will tell you that from what I read on the listserv, these things can be monsters. I mean, they can be a monster thing to undertake and to get done. So, I guess what I'm trying to ascertain today, what is the, what is the end game? What's the key takeaway? How would I know if we had, if we had done this exactly the way the board wishes? What do you, you know, what do you guys want us to accomplish with this program? Because that will help me better define how maybe to design the program. And I think maybe if we have board discussion along those lines, like we've got a blank slate, we want to do some sort of program that will ensure higher quality housing or ensure or enforce rental housing standards, what is it that you guys would consider a success?
I have no doubt, Mr. Limata, that, you know, you and our staff will, you know, whatever program, you would make it work. But I want to make sure that, you know, if we're running 100 miles an hour at this thing, we're running 100 miles in the right direction, and that we're not going in a direction that's going to cause us more headaches and not do what we want to achieve. So, you know, I believe we might need to have a committee to look at this in-depth, kind of like what we have done with some of the other strategic plan items to flesh it out. Otherwise, we're going to have some very long board meetings. But, so I think the first thing, we need to figure out what is, you know, the end game? What is the goal that we want to achieve? I know, you know, we talked a lot about blight and wanting to make sure that these apartment buildings are up to standards, and we aren't allowing them to continue in a blighted way. Same with rental homes, that they're not. But we also want to make sure we're not intruding on people's rights either. The other thing I think that would be important is to get some input. Actually, we have some fairly large rental facility, you know, apartment complexes. I mean, you look at Thorn Ridge, you look at some of these other places, and they contribute, you know, to our tax base. They, you know, they maintain their properties well. I want to make sure that they have a voice in what we come up with, or what they see as our goals, and react to them. And maybe they have a few things that they would like to see included. And also, to talk with other communities, as you suggested, Mr. Limata. Mr. Laddie?
Well, just, and again, what you, what you started with is exactly right. We don't want to head up at 100 miles an hour in the wrong direction. And there are a lot of opportunities to go in the wrong direction with this. We, when we talked about our concern about blight and our desire to clean up blighted properties in the township, we're really dealing with codes that are already in existence, and they deal primarily with the outside of properties, and the suitability of the outside of the property and the structure, which we can use the building code for. This, or at least the discussion of the ordinance tonight is something a little bit more, it's different, and it's more intrusive, and therefore, it's, it's got more possibilities for problems. When we begin to go into properties that, when it's not related to the Michigan Building Code, when we're not being asked to come in there and do an inspection and approve some sort of project or work, we, it is not necessarily a friendly entry. And we have all sorts of legal considerations to abide by, just like in a criminal case. We don't just get to go into people's houses and take a look around and cite what we want to cite. And then, it could lead to other things. So, there are constitutional issues, there are property right issues, there's process issues. And then, one of the things that struck me is, we would be putting ourselves really in between the relationship of the landlord and the tenant, because they, you know, if it's a situation where we're talking about conditions of the property, we're obviously going to want to make sure that everybody's safe and things are able to be inhabited. But we also, we don't want to find ourselves being used as a, as a pawn, basically, between the landlord and tenant. And in the statute that gives us the basis for these laws, there is an element where if we found a violation, rent can be escrowed. It can, it can have all sorts of business effects that can make it complicated for us. And so, I don't want to, I don't want to bore you with that necessarily, but if you do create a committee, I would love to be a part of it, because there are a lot of legal elements to this that we need to fully understand before we engage in it. Remember, again, if you, if you really want to make it simple, blight is on the outside. We have access to that. This, as we, as we move into people's, the inside of their homes, we're now sort of quasi-criminal in the process to get in. And so, it creates a lot of pressure for our administrators.
Yeah, that, you know, I'm thinking in terms of, we were talking road building in the past as far as getting in the middle of things, where, you know, private roads and, you know, the whole idea of us being involved in the paving of private roads, it kind of puts us in the middle in the same way. I didn't think of that with this, but the more you mention it, Mr. Laddie, if we're going to get in the middle of withholding rent and all that, and, you know, the liability of, hey, we said this was safe, and somebody got hurt, it opens up some avenues that we want to seriously consider. Yes, Dr. Raridan.
Couple things. One is, right now, we still have recourse if we deem a place inhabitable. I mean, a renter could always say he's, the person's not providing X, and we could.
Correct.
Do something right now.
You're correct.
So, I don't think we have to run it this real fast either, you know, right now. But the second thing, maybe this would be a good spot for building and zoning, the...
Be involved.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, they could tell us if they have any problems with this issue. Mr. Kilmer?
I have heard horror stories about the, if you can speak into the microphone. About the difficulty that some of the landlords are having if somebody's not paying rent or whatever. And there's a whole field of rules and regulations there too, that, you know, I, again, we have, we have to look at protecting our landlords too.
Right?
So.
Yes, Mr. Fike?
But this isn't about people not paying rent, right? This is about somebody not maintaining their property. And I thought I got around the township pretty well. I haven't seen a whole lot of this. Now, maybe you see more of this, Dennis, or you hear about more of this. I haven't seen this to be a huge overriding problem. Is it a big concern that you, you get complaints about blight and houses that are in disrepair and apartments that are in, looking crap, lousy? Trustee Fike, we haven't to date, but then again, we don't have the program. And if you look at, even like I sent you the, I just did a screen grab.
Right.
Pittsfield Township, and there was a link on there. And if you look at that link, they have a self-reporting portal where a renter can go. It's form-fillable. They hit it, they talk about what the issue is, and they send it. And part of what Attorney Laddie said is, based upon, they want to let us in, the legalities around there, are there, because obviously, our biggest concerns are, are there any dangers? If we adopt this program, do they have working smoke detectors? Are there any, you know, electrical issues? Are that, you know, that kind of thing? So, that's what our building inspectors are basically going in certifying every two years or whatever our program is, that yes, it's habitable, whatever. We would probably need some sort of an arm where somebody would flag it from an interior, because we're never going to know otherwise. Exterior, if it's more about an exterior issue, and that's why I think this conversation's so important, we have the ability to enforce uniform building codes right now. And I do have Jeremy Smith here, and he can speak to that as well. But we have the ability in our zoning ordinances to address blight from an exterior perspective, and it's more to do with our code enforcement program that we're currently working with. So, that's, you know, hard for me to answer your question on the interior when we don't have a program in place. I have never received a complaint from a tenant about, hey, I'm in an illiberal environment. If we started to advertise a program like this, would we get those? Maybe.
Mr. White?
Somebody who is in private practice, I would get multiple calls on these issues per month. I mean, you would be surprised at the awful electrical plumbing issues that I heard, horror stories. And I, basically, all I would say is, well, then, don't pay your rent. And they're like, well, I want to stay here. And a lot of people are in a bad situation at that point. And partly, we're for that, but it's really about the neighboring houses as well. Again, if, I mean, not to sound bad, and obviously, we can worry about the exterior, but, you know, if the interior is not maintained, well, that's going to be probably reflected in rental rates. And lower rental rates are going to have an influence on the community as well. So, I mean, that's, does have a bigger economic spillover effect into the community than just what the house looks like.
Yeah. I believe it's something we should discuss, as, you know, I have a committee that looks at this, but, but I don't think it's anything we need to, you know, go at 100 miles an hour. But, you know, if there's concerns, how do we address those in the least intrusive way? So, I don't know. Mr. White, would you care to serve on something like that?
Sure.
Okay. Anybody else care to serve on something along those lines?
Me, pick me.
You're on it already.
Somehow, I knew that.
I would, with the understanding, I have some health issues coming up that.
All right.
But other than that, yes.
Okay. All right, so we will sit down and meet, and we'll have Mr. Smith, we'll have Mr. Laddie with us. We will meet with some of the code enforcement and building inspectors as well.
And that's the thing right now, is even if we were to get a complaint, like, you know, when Trustee White, you know, in private practice, he's getting complaints with this, where you can empathize with those people. But if we got those complaints now, we don't have the ability to send our building inspectors out there, because our building inspectors go out to do permit approvals. So, with the lacking this program, we don't just send building inspectors out to go into somebody's, you know, environment to take a look at it. That's not our role, because then, we're picking up liability where we don't.
Exactly.
Have authority or have any reason to add that liability.
Sure.
Until we start our own program, where then, we're going to certify that there's a certificate of occupancy that, you know, this is okay to live in. But David is right in that, just understand that we will add liability to ourselves in doing it, because now, we're saying it's okay to go there, and if there was electrical wiring, fire, or something, then we have certainly absorbed some of that liability because of our...
Probably similar to along the lines of buying one of these certified used vehicles that, you know, we're certifying this is okay to live in. We got to be careful. But if there's concerns there, we need to see if there's a way to address it. So.
We'll send, just to follow it up, to close it out then, we'll send something out for, I'm assuming you.
Yes.
Trustee White, David, myself, and we'll get the initial meeting schedule sometime in the next couple of weeks.
Yep. Mr. Kilmer?
Yep.
Next issue, unless anybody has anything else on that. Anything else on strategic planning, Mr. Limata, that you wanted to mention, or?
It's all I had prepared for this evening, but I'd be happy to provide any other information if anybody has any questions on any other of the goals or items.
Okay. Moving on to our superintendent's performance evaluation, we appreciate everybody sending Mr. Laddie your comments and reviews. And, Mr. Liman, any thoughts?
I will say that this is your opportunity to provide any feedback that you want. I have received a copy of, consolidated copy of ratings and comments. I really appreciate the board taking the time to go through this. I know it's kind of a pain in the rear to stop and focus through there. There's 13 different metrics that I ask you to measure me on. It gives me the feedback, so I know that I'm heading in the right direction. I'm carrying out the board's wishes. I really do appreciate the statements that were made, and I just want to say thank you to the board, because I was very happy to receive the review that I received. And there's a few follow-up questions that I'll probably going to have for a couple of you on a comment that you may have made, just so that I make sure that I'm on the same page, that I understand. page that I understand. There was, for example, there was a comment about sometimes things come up in a meeting that there may not have been information out to the board in time. I want to make sure that we limit that as much as possible. It's going to happen, but I want to make sure that I'm providing the information in a timely manner, if it's not from me, from one of the department heads, whatever it is. So I'll do some follow-up on that with you guys, just to make sure that I'm getting you what you need so that you're making informed decisions.
The majority, if not the overwhelming majority, all rated Mr. Limata in the consistently performs above requirements, which is the highest level. And I can read a few of the comments if this board would like.
Go ahead.
All right. So, under quality of work, Dennis' work product is superior in all aspects. He provides timely reports and represents the township in an exceptional manner. Further, Dennis is always available to answer questions and provide analysis. Another comment under that topic, Dennis isn't a perfect superintendent, but he's close. His knowledge of the job, handling of the finances, and eye on the big picture are impressive. The job is a bit of a juggling act, and it's clear to me that this guy can handle it. When I started, we had no superintendent. The previous board let him go. So I did some due diligence to determine why the previous board acted in the way and whether we should bring him back. I found a consensus of the people I talked with, that Dennis was the man for the job. We were lucky to get him back. Dennis successfully made the transition. The results have been smooth-running operation, in my view. His leadership skills are excellent among his best qualities, his attitude and demeanor. Those are very important to me. Plus, bottom line, I trust the guy. He knows, he cares about the people who live and work in our township, along with our employees. The work culture appears to be good as well. These are not easy times to be a manager of anyone, yet in politics, sometimes entitled residents and occasionally disgruntled employees, and you could have a recipe for disaster, but Dennis has risen to the challenge. Their current growth, Grand Lake Township, has become the envy of other local jurisdictions. In part, we have Dennis to thank. Another board member, all state and federal reporting are accurate, professional, and on time. HR functions, including benefits administration, payroll, recruiting, performance reviews, and administration of union collective bargaining agreements are carried out legally and fairly. And board deliverables, including packet information and strategic planning updates, are thorough and professional. Let's see. Mr. Lima performs his work in a professional, accurate, and thorough manner. So that was one topic. Dennis is exceptionally timely in his deliverables. I've never known him to miss a deadline. Let's see what some of them are notable. Dennis does a good job at creating, presenting a unified message for the township and its staff. I believe a public face of unanimity here is good for employee morale and sends a message to residents and the business community of a stable, competent government body that is worth investing in. Consistently demonstrate the importance of teamwork throughout the organization, provide department, adds the ability to collaborate on issues of importance to the township, for example, our strategic plan. The administrative team focuses on continuous improvement and developing leadership skills during our bi-weekly staff meetings, with the end game of creating an inclusive culture where all work to create opportunity and solve problems together. Township staff with Dennis at the helm has never been as cohesive in my tenure. Accountability, trust, and leadership are priorities that have been gendered and encouraged among department heads and staff. Dennis leads by example and holds himself to a higher standard than his subordinates. So you kind of get the drift that we believe that Dennis is the right person for this position. Dennis is a very thoughtful and effective communicator. He takes into consideration others' points of view and listens to others patiently. I pride myself on the ability to communicate with anyone or outside the township organization, skilled at using upset residents so they can understand sometimes complex policy. Dennis provides clear, direct, and timely communication with his employees and township constituent. He encourages straightforward and honest discussion even when the subject matter may be unpleasant. And then Dennis mentioned the comment with regard to sometimes needing more information. So, I don't know if I need to read through any more, but we're good.
We're good.
Okay. So, Mr. Laddie, we're going to discuss this at our next meeting.
Yes. How does that work?
Yeah, we are, thank you. Because, again, after following his performance, it is time for us to consider whether or not we want to exercise part of his contract that allows us to award him some additional compensation. So what I'd like to do is send you some correspondence that reflects the language in his contract and then give you some possibilities to consider. And then next, at our next meeting, if you don't mind, we can go into a closed session without Dennis and discuss what your options are and what you want to do. And so we'll take that up at our next meeting if that's agreeable.
Yep. Mr. Robertson?
Yeah, I just wanted to take a moment to say publicly how very, very pleased I am with your performance, Dennis. I'm obviously in the township every day, and I see the evidence of your work. It's excellent in all respects. I think the, not only is every department head focused on their work, but the esprit de corps in the office is great. I think it's been, as it's been explained to me by those that have been on the board longer than I'm chiefly the supervisor, I think the spirit, team spirit's never been better. And I think that's certainly important in all the work that we do. So, thank you for the fact that your door is always open. Thank you for the conversations that we've had on complicated issues, difficult issues that require explanation and the time that you spent with me explaining issues in great detail. So, in all respects, good work.
Thank you.
I want to thank this board too because, you know...
One of the things, I mean, I think honestly that this review affirms the fact that we as a board, the smartest move that we had made was the first move that we made upon taking office, and that was restoring Dennis to his position because it certainly is paying dividends and I, so pat on the back to the board for making the right choice very early on.
And that's, I wanted to thank this board for that, but also, you know, for communicating clearly with Dennis. He has, you know, seven people here that are chirping at him sometimes, and besides, you know, a couple hundred staff and then even some outside organizations like today that we'll talk about in just a minute. But I think, you know, as a board, us being cohesive and trying to come to consensus on things really helps Dennis and also helps the staff to see that we're going to be a stable township. And, you know, we're going to tackle some tough issues coming up. We have some union contract negotiations, we have, you know, some other issues that we've got to cover as far as funding, but I believe that we can come to a consensus as a board to make things work. And I don't like three, four votes on things. I like to see if we can't resolve everybody's concerns and address those. So, congratulations, Dennis, on a great review.
Thank you.
And thanks for, what is it, about a year now? Or, let's see, what is it about a year that we?
It was a year on December 14th of my
Okay, all right.
Return from hiatus.
All right. Okay, well, great. So we'll bring this topic up next week, and we'll watch for Mr. Laddie's correspondence. Anything else, Mr. Liman?
I sincerely thank you guys for taking the time to do this, provide the feedback. And again, you don't have to wait a year. Anytime that, you know, if I fall down, I'm getting you what you need, let me know. Text me, call me, stop in. I can only be as good as, you know, is, if I get the feedback. So let's not wait a year. If there's something that I'm doing that is irritating you or whatever, let me know so I can fix it.
Absolutely. That's very good policy. Okay, moving on to our 911 consortium discussion. So, we had a meeting today at Mott Community College at 2:00. And I have to say that our township position, we did not advance our concerns in terms of winning the votes that we needed, but we pled our case. All of you saw the legal opinion that we received from the law firm that we employed, Fahy &amp; Schultz. I thought it made very clear the 10 issues primarily that Fahy &amp; Schultz feel that could open the 911 consortium for some great liability, as well as the municipality, 31 municipalities that are part of it. Dennis Limata attended with me, our superintendent, spoke in public comment. Dave Robertson, Clerk Robertson, came and spoke. The overriding concern, just for our public that's watching, is that we have about 10 municipalities that want to sign exclusive agreements with one particular EMS provider, MedStar. But the concern is with regard to previous lawsuits, number one, but it's also shifting away from going with the closest available ambulance or EMS provider and going with whoever's contracted for that community. And so it's tantamount to, if you were at Home Depot on Hill Road, for example, I've given this example, I know before, but you're having a medical emergency at Home Depot, and guess what? 911 gets the call saying, hey, we have a medical emergency there. 911 has to, let's say, call an ambulance service that's 10 minutes away versus Schwartz that's right across the street because that community's contracted, let's say, with another provider. Soon as something like that happens, guess what? There's going to be a lawsuit, I believe. And it's not just my opinion. You know, we had so many opinions coming forth in the last couple of months on this topic. The 911 attorney, Anthony Chubb, even said today that it's not a matter of if we're going to get sued, it's a matter of basically when. I asked, do we have money in reserve for fighting something like this? He mentioned that we have about $90,000, but the concern I have is that we're voting against this. I asked that they would basically allow us to not be part of the liability portion of this, and they said, no, you can't. Even though we voted on a resolution that says that those that voted in favor of this will absorb the liability, we're going to hold their feet to the fire when they come wanting legal fees and what have you. I don't believe that our township should be responsible for that. So we did get outvoted. Not all the municipalities were there. I believe it was eight to 13, you know, 13 in favor of going with the exclusive contracts. And there's 31 total that could have been there. So we had quite a few municipalities that are missing, that didn't show up, which is also a tragedy. But we do empathize with the communities that have a situation where emergency services don't get there right away. It's not unique to Genesee County. It's a problem that's statewide. It's a problem that was exacerbated by COVID. It's not the only thing that caused it, but it's a problem that's existed for a long time. My father passed away 30 years ago waiting for an ambulance to get to him in Flushing Township, so it's close to me. So the bottom line is that we're going to probably have to meet and discuss what our next step is going to be in terms of, you know, protecting ourselves from liability. We'll see if any of the other integers or providers decide that they're going to take legal action. Yes?
Does it take 16 votes to push this forward?
No, it just took a majority of those in attendance, and that's why it was 13 to eight.
Any of, any of our neighboring people vote for this?
Yes. It's actually, you know, pretty much the east side of the county that is driving force behind this, the Goodrich Atlas, Davison, and that area that is pushing for this issue. You know, part of the problem is that the, there's mutual aid, right? That various communities and with EMS, they can't cross the county line because of Genesee County has a licensing process that you have to go to that's very expensive. And so those that are on the border of, let's say, Oakland County or even LaPierre County in the north, I guess it wouldn't be LaPierre, but, well, Oakland County anyways, I know for certain.
I got up in the north.
Yeah, they can't come over into our township or into our county. And so when you're on the edge like that, you've got to depend on anything coming from the more populated areas, which tend to be the center of our county. So, yeah, Grand Lake City voted in favor of it. They're not one of the entities that want to have an exclusive, but they voted in favor of it. Monday Township, so, yeah, we're surrounded by communities that voted in favor of it.
Fountain?
Fountain voted in favor of it. They actually signed an agreement for an exclusive arrangement.
Fountain Township.
Yeah, Fountain Township. City of Fountain already has their own PISA app or 911 service. Mr. Liman, do you want to chime in? You were there for the whole meeting and heard the discussion.
Yeah, I guess a couple of things really, really strike me. I mean, we looked at it and asked Fahy, Schultz to provide us a legal opinion based upon our concern for the additional liability, and is there an ability to indemnify us moving forward if they decide to do this? You know, the problem that they're trying to solve, the problem is that there's not enough ambulances in out-county areas. But that's kind of true right now because when COVID hit, the schools shut down, you couldn't train new EMS personnel, so there's ambulances that are vacant that you can't hire people to put in. They say it's gone on, you know, way before the COVID situation, but the COVID situation exacerbated it and led to this. But I look at it as, did, you had six entities operating within Genesee County, I think, all the ambulances services.
Yes.
Now you've got 10 or 11 municipalities who signed an exclusive agreement, and they want the, there's no question about whether it's legal for them to sign those exclusive agreements. Anybody, City, Village, Township can sign an agreement to provide their emergency coverage. The question has to do with how it's dispatched, and therein lies the issue. And they want dispatch for a 911 consortium to change how they dispatch. They want the dispatchers to now look and see what type of agreement does this community have. And so out of these six entities that would normally be the closest responding, and that's what the 911 Act says, the closest appropriate vehicle to respond, they're trying to change the semantics and say, an appropriate vehicle is a MedStar vehicle because we're contracted with them on an exclusive agreement. So that means the closest ambulance will not be dispatched unless it's, you know, it's a MedStar one that's the closest. It could be, MedStar could be 10 minutes farther and they'll be dispatched. And there's nothing in those agreements that has any teeth in it that makes, it's not saying, MedStar's not saying, we're going to park an ambulance in your township. They're not saying, we're going to have more ambulances in the county. They're just saying, let us be exclusive. And I'm not sure how limiting the number of ambulances they're going to provide services to those 10 or 11 municipalities solves their issue. And I think that opens up the liability that then we take on. And the indemnity agreements that they're putting on, they're focusing on insurance, saying if it's a choking baby and they don't get there because they had to send somebody from 15 minutes farther away to get MedStar, then there's a catastrophic lawsuit and it goes above and beyond the insurance coverages. The agreement says that all 31 entities of this then pay the difference. We all have to pay. My question on, Scott asked them today, Supervisor Bennett, about how much money do we have for legal fees this year? They said $90,000 or $95,000 are in the budget. Attorney Chubb said mine will probably come in around $37,000 like last year. So that's what's left, $50,000 to defend yourself against any of this litigation. You can burn through $50,000 in a hurry in litigation, as you all are well aware. So what happens if they don't have the money? Then all of the entities have to pay. So I think we have some very serious questions that we need answers to. If that's the case, then do those indemnity agreements work that we are now indemnified from having to pay the legal bills? I think if you're giving me an indemnity agreement saying, you're indemnified, nothing's going to happen to you, then that means I also shouldn't have to participate in the increased legal fees because there are going to be... have to participate in the increased legal fees because there are going to be lawsuits. They're going to be sued. There was a ton of legal opinions floating out there. The only one that brought up both Court of Appeals opinions was the one we got from Fahy that we provided them. Most of them ignored that this has been litigated, most recently, 2014, against Genesee County 911 Consortium, and they lost. It will be the same argument. I mean, I think it's, sitting there today and watching it, when you have your attorney telling you, don't do this because it's going to create liability, but if you're going to do it, here's how maybe we can try to contain that liability as much as possible. But he answered the question point blank a couple of times and said, oh, no, like, this isn't to stop you from being sued, it's just to try to limit the damages when we get sued. So there's a lot of things, I think, that you guys need to look at and make a decision about. One, maybe to ask for Attorney General's opinion, ask Senator Johnson or Tim Sneller to ask for an Attorney General's opinion. It doesn't mean that they have to listen to it, because they don't. It only applies to state when you get an AG opinion, but it will be, it would be a very good question to ask, and it would also kind of show where the Court of Appeals probably would go as it works its way through. They're going to support the Court of Appeals opinions that already exist. It was a frustrating day because there was a lot of misinformation that was thrown out there, and when you have your own legal counsel telling you not to do something, you do it anyway, and then we're going to share in that, it just rubs me the wrong way that we're telling you, don't do this, our resolution, in fact, the way the agenda was set up, we had a resolution that you guys all saw that said, we shouldn't do this, and here's the 10 reasons why. In a political move, the Fountain Township Supervisor said, well, let's move up all of these resolutions from the communities who are asking to do these exclusive agreements up in advance of that. I mean, it just, it was, it was a very frustrating day, and I think we're, in the end, Grand Lake Township is left with additional liability without the indemnity that we so desired. Your conversations are going to have to be, maybe it is an Attorney General's opinion, maybe it's withdrawing from the consortium, there's a way to do that, we have to give them notice, and we start looking at creating our own PSAP. Terrifies me, quite frankly. I don't want to go in that direction, but I also don't think that we can just let, we can allow a group to vote against the law to take an action that creates liability for Grand Lake Township.
Mr. Fike?
So this vote today, that's it? I mean, this, when does this take effect?
The, it takes effect immediately, however, it's going to take probably at least 90 days for the system to be set up. As Mr. Lemata, you know, mentioned, right now, when you call 911, the operator has a computer, you know, several screens in front of them, they can tell exactly where the closest EMS unit is to your emergency. The system's going to have to change so that when you're in Fountain Township, you're going to, instead of the closest available ambulance, we're going to have to call MedStar. So that system has to be redesigned to do that. But, so it may, they're having some software issues anyways because we're converting over to a new system. But, you know, you can imagine if there's an ambulance just down the road and we're going with, oh, no, we can't use that one, we've got to use the contracted one, there's going to be some people that are not pleased with that kind of setup.
I think we asked before, and hopefully it isn't too much work, since it's on the table that we would perhaps create our own 911 right here in the Grand Lake Township Police Department, I'd like a cost breakout of, like, how much is that going to cost? How many people would we have to hire? Could we, you know, get with another jurisdiction, perhaps, to lessen, you know, the load? Are there other jurisdictions in our same boat that are just as livid as we are over this vote?
We had, we have a committee that has met a couple of times on this issue. We wanted to go this route to see if we could convince the rest of the group through, you know, our legal arguments. That failed, even though, even like Mr. Lemata says, the attorney, Anthony Chubb, for 911 said that, you know, the way this thing's set up, we are going to get sued, it's just a matter of when and how much. So we wanted to try the avenue of showing where the legal pitfalls are with this, and that failed. So I think now we regroup and we do start to look at all the options. You know, the media was asking, hey, are we going to pull out? And I just said, we're going to check out all the options. You know, I think Mr. Lemata mentioned, one of our options is get a legal opinion from the Attorney General, declaratory ruling, which isn't binding, but it's one more opinion, and I would think that it holds much weight.
And one more time, just so I heard you correctly, Scott, even though we voted no, we are bound by the whole committees. So we're liable.
Yeah, it's like if you had a business partner and your business partner decides to do something that half the, or three quarters of the attorneys have said is illegal, but we're going to go forward, you're still partners. And that's the case with the consortium, we're still partners in it. Mr. White had his hand up down here, I believe.
Are we going into closed session to discuss this more?
I think I would like to. We have a legal opinion from Fahy and Schultz. I'd like to see if we couldn't bring Attorney Bill Fahy up to talk with us and probably go into closed session at that time. If that, would that work, Mr. White?
Yeah, I, that's fine.
Okay. So I think Mr. Laddier, Mr. Lemata, that acceptable if we have brought in Mr. Fahy next meeting and go into closed session, discuss this issue, or?
I think that's exactly.
Okay. All right. Yes, Dr. Raridan?
Oh, how much lead time do they need for, if we were to withdraw? You said that there's...
It's, the withdrawal may not be made. It said, any party may withdraw from the agreement and thereby prospectively rescind or terminate the agreement by a formal majority vote of the governing body, which approved withdrawal must also specify the effective date. The withdrawal may not be made effective, however, prior to 180 days after the party has notified the consortium of the approval of the withdrawal, or at the end of the consortium's fiscal year within which the vote is taken, whichever is later.
The important part also is, you know, finances, obviously, in terms of, there is revenue that goes to the 911 consortium on behalf of Grand Lake Township, and it's from everybody's phone surcharges. I've got to imagine that, I have seen it in the past, I don't want to be quoted on the amount, but it's a sizable amount of money. And so we need to compare that with what the cost would be for us operating that system ourself. It's not impossible. There's lots of municipalities that do it in Oakland County. Actually, Fountain City actually operates their own as well, and they do receive the revenue from the surcharge. So one of the big, there's some concern, but, you know, it's doable. Clerk Robertson?
I think this came, this issue came the last time we discussed, but as far as the indemnification that the 911 consortium and its member units are relying upon in their own minds, who owns it, support it, they're relying on the fact insurers are going to be able to cover, cover claims that are brought against them. What if, but if the insurance companies refuse, then potentially at least, all of the consortium, all 31 members are on the hook for the entirety of any, any claim, and that would, that could be in the millions, could it not?
The last judgment, I believe, was over $20 million against the county for the case that Mr. Lemata mentioned.
And, and, okay, I just want, I wanted to get a clarification on that point. Thank you very much.
Yep. So, yes.
Kind of piggyback on that, if, if what they're doing is against the law in the sense that the common sense interpretation of appropriate, I think, would mean vehicle that could handle the emergency, not as a particular company. But if they're doing something against statute, would the insurance company have to even cover you?
That's the question.
Yeah, that's a good question.
That is the question.
If you're, if you're acting outside the scope of your authority, anytime that you've ever been sued as a municipality, the first thing you get from your insurance carrier is a letter that says, if we can show or determine that you were acting outside of the scope of your authority, your coverage will be denied. So that, there is that possibility, especially because they're trying to, trying to equate this with the dispatch method. Like I said, you know, they tried to paint this as we were trying to stop them from signing exclusive agreements. They can sign the exclusive agreements, but what we're saying is the dispatch method. We're not trying to stop you from signing agreements. We're trying to say that you can't change the dispatch method without creating liability.
Well, and that's, that's the problem, is that if whoever gives us, whatever ambulance company is going to, you know, provide this insurance, I mean, why would, why would the insurance company say it's okay?
This is, this is from, again, the two Court of Appeals opinions that were looked at, and they did argue the appropriate unit language in those Court of Appeals opinions. And I, you know, they found that the exclusive service agreements cannot bind a PSAP to dispatch any unit but the one located closest without violating the 911 Act. And it was those, you know, both courts found this. It was, you know, from the 911, Genesee County 911 Consortium versus Stat, that court said that the provisions of MCL 333 relied upon by the plaintiff merely permit local government units to enter into contracts for the provision of emergency medical services. They do not mandate that a county consortium comply with the terms of any such contract, nor do they address at all the dispatching of emergency medical service providers. The City of Potterville Court of Appeals opinion reiterated the exact same reasoning three years later. And so I think what, you know, again, it's not, they're unpublished, but I think it's very compelling when you read it that the EMS service agreements that require dispatch to a contracted provider are absolutely unlawful under the 911 Act.
And so when they're saying appropriate, they're saying probably basic life support versus advanced life support.
ALS, ALS, right.
They're not saying.
Level one is level two.
Right. They're not saying Schwartz versus MedStar. I mean, this is crazy.
I agree.
This is going to get everybody in the county in a bind if this proceeds like this.
You know, I want to make sure that we provide the best service, but we also have to make sure, you know, our own liability is, you know, we want to investigate all different options. There are some other options. I mean, municipalities can pay to have EMS service parked in their community, help subsidize it, form their own EMS. I mean, there's emergency medical services associated with fire departments all over the state. I mean, there's no reason why some of these communities couldn't do that. So.
Cheaper than the lawsuit.
Right. Can we create substations so that they have a place to park an ambulance, you know, to park a unit where there's, you know, a coffee pot and a bathroom? Can we, what other steps could we possibly do as a consortium to make sure that we're getting the appropriate level of service to the out-county area? I know there's a solution, but I sure don't think this is the only solution that should be considered, and right now that's where we're at.
So before our next meeting, we'll gather more facts in far as funding. Maybe we can check even with some of the other PSAPs that are local and just see what some of their costs are. And we'll also talk to Attorney Fahy to see if he can attend our meeting either in person or virtually.
And if there's anything that any of the board members, if something comes up before our next meeting in two weeks, shoot me a quick email about information that you'd like to have prepared so that we can ask Attorney Fahy to be ready to answer your questions when he comes back in two weeks.
I'll send those directly to either Mr. Lemata or myself. We want to make sure we aren't discussing things online, obviously. Anything else? Okay. Well, I appreciate the support of the board, and it was a difficult meeting to attend because I feel like we're opening up Pandora's box here. So, under new business, the board will consider a motion to approve the purchase of three 2022 Chevrolet Tahoe Police Pursuit four-wheel-drive vehicles to be used in the Patrol Division from Berger Chevrolet for an amount not to exceed $118,761. Yeah, $118,761. An authorized township superintendent execute all purchases. Any thoughts? Anybody want to make the motion? Okay, motion by Mr. White, support by Mr. Fike.
Mr. Fike. Okay. Record roll call, Mr. Supervisor?
Yes.
Okay. Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Myself, yes?
Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yep.
Yes, seven, nothing, motion passes.
Thanks. Item B, under new business, the board will consider a motion to approve zoning change case number 672 for vinyl sash for part of the parcel 12-06-553-306 from R4, which is single-family residential to NC Neighborhood Commercial. And we have Mr. Smith, our zoning plan administrator. Good evening.
Good evening. So at the Planning Commission meeting on March 3, 2022, the Planning Commission unanimously voted to recommend approval for case number 672. The applicant is requesting the parcel mentioned above, currently zoned R4, a single-family residential, to be changed to NC Neighborhood Commercial for the purpose of constructing a new accessory structure to be used for storage for the business. The planning and zoning department would recommend a motion for approval for part of the parcel, it's not the entire parcel, a split combination has already been approved by my office and this other department heads of the township. We're just waiting on approval from Genesee County. So the whole parcel will not be rezoned, it'll just be the west half. You've got that information in your packets. So the west half will be currently zoned from R4 to NC Neighborhood Commercial.
Any questions, concerns?
Forgive me, I don't have my packet up. Where is this exactly?
This is on Fountain Road, Fountain and Harding.
They already have an existing place there, and they want to add to it?
Correct. They were looking to add to their business, but that wasn't feasible. So they are asking the gentleman that owns vinyl slash, Mr. Bloss, bought the property to the east of him on Harding, split the property, keeping a rental house on the one parcel, and then adding this vacant piece to his current parcel, and then would like to construct a outbuilding in order for more storage for his business.
Any concerns? Anybody care about the motion?
Motion by Dr. Raridan.
Motion by Raridan.
Trusted Hugo.
Supported by Hugo. Very good. Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing, motion passes.
Thank you. Item C, the board will consider a motion to approve zoning change case number 667 for Sam Surenas for parcel 12-16-551-019 from GEC, which is General Commercial, to Flex 2, which is Flexible Development 2. Mr. Smith?
Yes, thank you. So at the same meeting on March 3, the Planning Commission also unanimously voted to recommend approval for case number 667. The applicant is requesting the parcel mentioned above, currently zoned General Commercial to Flexible Development 2 for the purpose of development. Planning and zoning department would recommend a motion for approval for parcel number 12-16-551-019, currently zoned General Commercial to Flexible Development 1. This parcel is fronts on Dort Highway and is just south of Tri Park on the east side of the road.
Did anybody hear that?
Yes.
I don't understand the difference between.
General Commercial and Flexible Development?
Right.
So General Commercial, you have your restaurants, gas stations, things of that sort. The Flexible Development also includes General Commercial, but also we've added, we just added, and you guys approved that a couple of months ago, actually, a month ago, the Flexible 2 includes light industrial as well. So the current zoning as it stands, Mr. Surenas, for what he believes his business could be at that property, General Commercial doesn't fit. He needs a more, a higher intensity use at this parcel.
So Flexible Development 2, as we voted on last month, it just opens up possibilities for more mixed-use type activities.
Correct.
So, yeah, I've looked at it, and I'm fine with it. I'm good with it.
Is a motion in order, Mr. Supervisor?
Yes, please.
I'll make the motion to adopt, to approve item 8C.
Okay. Is there support? Support by Ms. Hugo?
Motion by myself, supported by.
Motion by myself, supported by Hugo. Trusty Raridan?
Yes.
Trusty Hugo?
Yes.
Trusty White?
Yes.
Trusty Fike?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing, motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Item D, planning and zoning updates from the Planning Commission on zoning text amendments.
So at the same meeting as well, Jill from Giffords Webster, Jill Bame, and Matt Wojcowski, they provided me with a memorandum to the Planning Commission for text amendment updates. The list included probably 30 different things that I've seen over the year that I've been here, and we went through some of those. Some of them included offsets for medium-density, low-density, high-density housing, automobile sales, temporary sheds, special land use amendments, things of that sort, the things that I've seen that would help clean up and make my life and day-to-day operations in my department easier. One of the other things that was also discussed at this meeting was the recreational vehicles, the RVs and the boats. I asked that Jill create a, amend the ordinance to recommend for seasonal use of these recreational vehicles. The Planning Commission unanimously agreed that the current ordinance does not work. They agreed that the seasonal ordinance, whatever we deem fit, April 1st, March 1st to October 1st, November 1st, they were in agreement that that is something that they'd be willing and they would vote very kindly in. And that was a unanimous decision by them. It's a, was it just an informational meeting? The public hearing for that will be at the next Planning Commission meeting on April 7, I believe.
What about those with, we just had firefighters in here with snowmobiles.
Snowmobiles will be treated the same.
Those are seasonal, but it's the opposite season.
When they're in use, they can be set there for, you know, a couple hours, and then they have to be put where they need to be if it's outside of the season. Another thing that Jill also mentioned too was removing that ordinance out of the zoning ordinance and making it a general ordinance. So that way, if, for whatever reason, if we do decide to move forward with this and change it, that it would be the board's decision going forward, not the Planning Commission, and we wouldn't have to do a public hearing. You could, as a board, make another resolution to change it as you see fit, and then we would move forward with it. So just options and things that are going to, you're going to be seeing here in the next few meetings.
All right, very good. I appreciate you going through all of those and tweaking those ordinances.
Thank you.
What's your recommendation on that, moving it from zoning ordinance to general ordinance?
It makes it cleaner, in my opinion. It gives the authority to the Township Board, and we don't have two boards. I know this has been a hot-button night on over the last few boards.
I like the idea.
It helps. If you see fit, if you'd like to change it, that's fine. The Planning Commission would gladly relinquish that authority wholeheartedly, so.
Yes, Mr. Fike?
So did the Planning Commission say why they feel it doesn't work?
They are in agreement with my decision as well, because they're chasing, our planning, zoning, code enforcement officers are chasing their tail. As it currently states, is you have a 48-hour window, and then you have to move it. Well, some of the residents are playing games with their code enforcement officers and can move it from one side of the driveway to the other, and that's their movement. I feel that we have other items that are in our strategic plan, specifically relating to code enforcement, that would be more fit for our code enforcers' time out in the field. And they agreed with me on that as well.
I don't know if everybody recalls, but I happened to use RVs as an example when we first were doing our strategic plan, I think it was. And the next several meetings, the room was full of either people that were in favor of or against, on both sides of that whole issue. So when we do this, we are going to cause people on both sides of the issue to come here.
Just a final thought on that is, it's going to take time if we do decide to change it. It's going to take time to let it work its, through its paces. Give me two years with it, and let's see where it goes. And then if we do make it a general ordinance, and if you guys want to change it back, or we have a something-in-the-middle compromise, however we want to change it, we can see fit.
So it's a hot-button issue with our residents?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Smith. Okay, future agenda items. Mr. Limiter, any thoughts on what strategic planning item we want to tackle at our next meeting?
I have two items that I think would be good for the Board's review. First, under community connectiveness and identity, the branding committee, the signage, I think it's time to start to really make a decision on what we're going to do with the sign out front and move it forward. Melissa Roberts, your executive coordinator, has put, logged many, many hours on there and agonized over her decision. There's boards all over our office of different variations. I say let's pull that Band-Aid off and get that thing done and move it forward. The other thing I think that we should have a conversation about and an update is on the community vitality. It's listed under like Tech Village and DDA Growth, but I think it's important for this Board to hear an update, especially where it comes to South Baldwin Road and those upgrades that are coming up. We did have a meeting about bonding with bond council, and this means some decisions are going to have to be made by this Board coming up relatively quick. I do have a meeting scheduled, David, that we're putting together right now with Row Engineering to start really putting timelines together. And what I saw today, or early this morning, was I think in Phase 2, which is the Dort Highway to the 900 feet off of Holly, with a start date of June, with a final day being done by September of 2022. So kind of along the timeframe that we had discussed earlier, with the start of June, so I think that does mean the clock's ticking as far as this Board making a decision on going out for bonding for that project. It looks like the cost was a little bit higher than, you know, our earlier estimates, but that's, I mean, we know that's coming up if we don't move it relatively quick, because the cost of everything just continues to skyrocket. So we'll see what that looks like when we actually go out for bids, but that bidding process will be coming up relatively quick, like in April. So that means our timeframe has started.
I think that'd be a very good topic, and we can invite some of the DDA members to join us here. But, right, on that bonding, we also, I was going to give this undermined, but we also are concerned about interest rates, that we want to take advantage of the interest rates, the way they are right now. I'm not sure we want to wait till end of summer to pull that trigger. So that's one of our concerns too, but, and beyond just widening the road, we have a number of other things we want to roll into that. But the one concern we have to have is that we have to pay, make the bond payments. And we want to make sure that, given, you know, our resources from the DDA, our annual, you know, tax collection from that area needs to be able to cover the bond payments. And so we met with the bonding attorneys and whoever else was part of that meeting to discuss, you know.
Well, Mr. Bezitski is going to, and this will reassure the Board, he is going to give us an opinion that assures us that the DDA will be able to pay the debt. So the one thing we obviously don't want is where you have paying general fund money toward the debt. But again, and Dennis has said this in the past, if we have a catastrophic 2008 event or property values drop, that's always, it's always going to give you a little bit of a racing heart. But we'll make sure, again, I think Mr. Bezitski will give you every assurance he can that it won't cost you anything.
Right. I think that'd be appropriate, to have somebody come in and speak on that. Okay, going to Board reports. Ms. Hugo, anything with Planning Commission?
Our next meeting is April 7.
Okay. Mr. White?
Next meeting is next Tuesday.
The zoning board appeals, okay. Mr. Fike?
There was a call for safety projects that you received.
Yes. Passed them along. Okay. Anything with police? Dr. Raridan? Mr. Kilmer, anything with Treasury Department? Clerk Robertson, anything?
Nothing to report, sir.
Okay.
I've pretty much given a report on 911. Something that I put at each of your places, our Parks and Rec staff put together this very professional sponsorship opportunity booklet that, just very professionally done, but it basically walks through all of the different activities that we have associated with Parks and Rec and the sponsorship opportunities for each of those. I know that we've already, I think this just came out last week, Mr. Limiter?
Yes.
And I know of one individual that already stepped up with $10,000, I believe.
Correct.
And wants to sponsor several things. We all, we've had similar corporations want to come forward and sponsor events.
Yep, they had immediate response. I think we got these back on Wednesday morning of last week. They started to get them out. They're making appointments to meet some people individually, but they've already gotten commitments for sponsorships, initially from one individual for $10,000 and two others, I think, in the $3,500 range for specific events.
Very good. Okay, Mr. Laddie, anything to report? Okay. Mr. Limiter?
ARPA funds, my first report back to the Department of Treasury is due April 30th. So we will be throwing that on the agenda to have a conversation, again, replacement. Those, ARPA funds are really designed for replacement for what, any losses of revenue that we had due to the COVID pandemic. And it really, because I reported to the Board prior that they opened it up to the first $10 million that you receive, you can use for general fund revenues. It cannot be used for unfunded liabilities is the only real caveat, but we can certainly put it to good use on a variety of projects, including the HVAC system for this building. It is very aged. In fact, my office hasn't had heat for about a month. I was thinking about building a fire, but then again, Bob Burdette said no.
But you're Norwegian, and you're from the Upper Peninsula. Why do you need heat?
Finished, so I'm like, well, it isn't that bad, you know, but, but we, there's some projects that we can do that will directly impact pressures that would have been on our general fund, which is a good thing, and there's some capital projects, obviously out at Parks and Recreation, we need to invest some money in. And I've put together a shortlist that includes about four or five items right now, expanded lighting on the trail system out at Bicentennial Park, some other opportunities out there to invest some money, the HVAC system here, but it's all things that you guys are going to have to determine whether that's a wise use of those ARPA funds. Again, we have a total right now of 3.8 million, expect it to be a little higher. The other great news that we got is based upon our census, most recent census, is I sent that out to the Board to show you that our constitutional revenue sharing amounts are going to come up. We are getting a reimbursement going back to October of 2020, so some of those dollars will impact 2021. We'll put them back on the 2021 year. Others will impact us for 2022, but the total appears to be around $600,000, based upon our new census numbers. So that's great news, because again, that's, the revenue sharing is our number two biggest form of revenue that we drive after property taxes.
Mr. Limiter, one of the things that, if you could just mention, again, for the public and even the Board, but I know that in a meeting during the week, you brought this up, is, you know, our taxable value and what it means revenue-wise, you know, with the recession, that we're just now getting back to the revenues of where we were pre-recession. If you could just give some of those dates and numbers.
Sure. If you look back to 2007 and where our taxable value was, $1.4 billion of taxable value, we lost that starting in 2008. It went negative for the next five or six years, and then we turned around and started slowly coming back up. In March border review of 2021, we had a taxable value back at like $1.467 billion, about within $20 million of where we were in 2007 for a taxable value. Still not quite there, but almost back to where we were. Because we're millage-driven, like most county taxing agencies, when you pay your taxes, those are all based on mills, we're millage-driven. So when you pay that your property taxes on your house, those mills, you know, based upon that taxable value, we lost all that taxable value. In fact, there's still a lot of, if you've owned your home for the last 20 years, you're very likely still paying less taxes than you were paying back in 2007, quite frankly, as far as a dollar amount that you pay. So we have to really, it's, they can drop overnight, and then they can only grow back because Proposition A, at 5% of the rate of inflation, whichever is less, it was growing at just barely over 1%. The factor this year from the state, from Lansing Decides Ease, 1.033, you should have all got your tax statements recently, that's a 3.3% growth based upon inflation factors. It's the biggest one we've seen in, you know, since early 2000s. So really, we clawed our way back, but if you think of the new growth of $50 million Magna Plant, how many housing starts have we had over, we were doing over 100 a year for how many years in a row? So we've got 1,000 new residential units, new commercial enterprises. We've added all of that in there, and even with that, we just got back to our taxable value of where we were in 2007. In the meantime, what's happened to healthcare costs, energy costs? All of those things have continued to skyrocket, yet we never cut services to Grand Blank Township residents once in that time. So we've learned to operate with, we operate with less. I mean, we just got back to the revenue that we had in 2007. However, revenue sharing had continued to go down. We were down by $14 million since 2003. So those revenue sharing dollars, when I say we're back at the taxable value we were, we're not back at the revenue that we had in 2007, but we're, at least we're close. But we're not even all the way back to the revenue. I mean, I wasn't here in 2007, but those must have been heady years, that's all I'm saying. I don't know where that money went, Dave.
There's a different time.
But it is good news that we're back there, but I think people need to understand, like, you know, people say, man, you know, the taxes went up. March border review starts tomorrow, there's, for the organizational meeting, and then people are going to come in, and they're going to be upset because they got, they saw the increase in their taxes. That 1.033 multiplier that you see, that came from the state. We can't, the border review can't change that number. It didn't get generated by Grand Blank Township. It had nothing to do with us, purely driven by the state.
I think it's an important story for our residents, business owners, to know. I mean, because it shows the strength of our township and the character of our employees to work hard so that we didn't have to make cuts anymore than what we did. We didn't grow as much as we needed to. And there's probably a few areas that are lacking because we were so short on revenue, and we're making up for some of that at the park right now, that things that weren't done, deferred maintenance. One of the things that Executive Coordinator, Ms. Roberts, put together, it's kind of a breakdown on where people's property taxes go, and to make it a little bit more legible for people to understand on our social media and website and what have you, so that, that thing's going to be coming out shortly. But I wanted it to be on our website so that when people say, hey, where are my taxes going, they can actually see, you know, visually where they're going. But thank you, Ms. Limiter. Anything else? Okay. Anything else? We'll go to the meeting. Clerk Robertson?
I'm asking the members to, well, after we adjourn, I need.
Signatures?
I need, initially.
Okay.
Is a motion in order?
Yes.
Okay. I'll make the motion to adjourn at 8:32 PM.
Support by Ms. Hugo. All those in favor say aye.
8:32 PM.
Any opposed?
I need your six, I need your initials on this.
You got it, you got it.
Long ones handy.